Condemned to order at 6:30.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Shosse? Ms. Kroll?
President.
Mr. G. Francesco?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Ms. Tyson Wright? Mr. Blaski?
Here.
Please stand for the flag ceremony.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. We're gonna have the citizens' comments. And the solicitor will explain the procedure.
I can hear you!
And the solicitor, we're gonna have the citizens' comments next. And the solicitor will explain the procedure to follow.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name's Tom Roth from the Solicitor's office. This is the first time I've been to Pencrest School District, so it's nice to be here. I have, I reviewed the board policy with respect to public comment. There are fourteen individuals, I believe, that have signed up for public comment. The board provides thirty minutes with a five-minute time period. I'd ask each speaker if you could keep it as short as you can so that we have enough time. Because I anticipate, and I'll, I'll ask, is there anybody that would like to speak that hasn't signed up, that is not one of the fourteen? Okay, I see one, looks like a few more. So what we'll do is, we'll go through the fourteen, and then, once the fourteen are done, if we could just queue up over here, you could just come up, state your name, your address, and then you have an opportunity to provide. The policy calls for two minutes. I hope that there's one agenda item, and that's the potential to appoint a new superintendent for the school district this evening. So I have a feeling there would be a lot of discussions. Feel free to say, "I agree with so-and-so, so-and-so, so-and-so," and everything they've said. We'll take whatever time, I believe, we'll take whatever time meets the board's discretion as to whether they want to extend the public comment period beyond thirty minutes. So as quickly and conveniently as possible. I'll read the first speaker, and I'll give you the next speaker. So that if you're sitting over here, I think this is the only podium. So if you'd like to come down and kind of be lined up. So as one speaker finishes, I'll announce the second speaker, and I'll let you know the next speaker, so we can kind of keep this moving along orderly. I haven't been here, so I'm not gonna assume anything. I'll give you my standard speech. I hope everybody conducts themselves in their appropriate manner. And how I describe that is, if this auditorium was filled with students, I hope we could all conduct ourselves in a manner that would set a good example for those students. With that said, we'll begin the public to be heard. I'll give a, I'll give you a little, kind of like a thirty-second wrap-up if you kind of see me going like this. That means you have thirty seconds or so. Just, I'm not gonna, I'm not calling anybody out of order. I'm not gonna stop you unless you really are using the timeframe. We'll try to give you an opportunity to just finish in an orderly manner so you can complete your thoughts, but I'll try to give you an update on where you're on your minutes. Okay? The first speaker is Dolores, and let me apologize if I mispronounced anybody's name. Hale. The next speaker is Catherine Edwards. Ms. Hale?
Good evening.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Am I on?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. I'm Dolores Hale, Cambridge Springs School District. My husband graduated from here. We have three very successful sons who've graduated from here, and we have several grandchildren who are now attending here. I'm very involved with the school, very involved with the community, and I'm a very vested interest that makes us the very successful community as we possibly can. And the school is our, is a very intricate part of our community. A week ago last Friday, I was informed that you had already interviewed candidates, and that was surprising to me because I didn't know we had advertised for the position. And so, the following Monday, I emailed all of you, which is a week ago today, and I emailed all of you the board and asked you why you aren't advertising for the most important position for the district. We advertise for our part-time cafeteria workers, our part-time janitors, but we don't think we have to advertise for the superintendent? This is ludicrous! So I said, this is, my email said, "This is a great opportunity. Solicit candidates in search of the market for the highest qualified candidate that will move our district in the right direction." I asked for a response. Why, you know, are we advertising? Luigi responded that they had two applicants applied internally and an external applicant that had applied. I don't know how he applied. We hadn't even advertised for it. And per Luigi, the qualified, they were all qualified for the position. And the external candidate, who we've come to know as James Smith, Principal of Bell Valley and Mill Creek, was highly qualified for the position. Highly qualified. That's not true. I've since found out that the two internal candidates were Patty Feeley, Kenneth Newman from Central Office, and then the external was James Smith. Of the three candidates, Feeley and Newman are yes to experience in school administration, experience in budgeting in years, with Feeley having eighteen years and Newman fifteen, experience in grant writing, experience in policy writing, and working with school boards. Smith had zero of any of that. He's your highly qualified candidate, per Mr. D. Francesco. Tim Brown and Jeff Brooks stated that after the initial interview, the board decided to advertise for the position. I felt reassured that we were gonna do the right thing. This is Monday. Tuesday morning, a special meeting is advertised to potentially appoint a superintendent contract. I need to snapshot that, send it to all you school board members, ask for a response to that. No response from any of you. Saturday, I'm volunteering at a marathon, scrolling through my phone while I'm waiting for the runners to come through. I see somebody snapshotted a statement from Mr. Smith, who, that he sent to all his colleagues at Bell Valley, that the rumors were true, that on October 2nd, today, I go to the Pencrest, he spells Pencrest wrong, school district meeting where I, where they will appoint me superintendent. Appalling. I'm like, "What?" Snapshoted that, sent that all back to all of you. Of course, I get the responses from the responsible people on this board. Mr. Brown, who knew nothing about it, Mr. Brooks, who knew nothing about it, and Teresa Kroll. Thank you for being responsible. The proper procedure for this would be to advertise this for thirty days. You then interview all the candidates, you narrow it down to three or four, you interview them a second time. Since none of you, except for maybe Teresa Kroll, has any experience in human resources and interviewing, you should ask an outside agency, the Intervene at Five is very well-known for helping all school districts in this matter, to have a second set of eyes on this. You are irresponsible for thinking that you're gonna do this and shove this down our throats. There is no need to rush this decision. We have very capable people in Central Office that can run this building, this district, for the next two or three months while we do this properly. Okay? I've tried to find out, who told Dr. Smith he has the job? Not one of you can tell me that. Dr. Smith, is he here? Where is he?
Well, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so nobody's gonna tell us he told him he had the job? So either somebody told him?
If I could just, and I'll let you speak, I'm not shutting you down. We can't do this this way. This is a public comment session. It's not an inquisition where you ask questions.
The rules don't matter here at Pencrest. You can't answer, you just don't want to.
Listen, listen. Listen, folks, this is the first time I've ever been here. I don't know any of you.
Time's up.
Oh, no way, no way, no way. Okay, and don't advertise for, okay.
If I can just, if I can.
We won't ask, I won't ask.
I'll give you your time.
We don't have to know, I guess.
Well, I'm just trying to, listen, I'm doing this the same way I do for any of my clients, and I have a number of school district clients. I'm just trying to make sure this is an orderly process.
I get it.
I'm giving you your time, and I appreciate your comments, so, and I'm like, the clock's going, but I'm not counting this time. So if you would, if, if everybody could just refrain, make your points, board members aren't gonna ask questions, we're certainly not gonna ask individuals to stand up in the audience and identify themselves. So if you could just do that, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, I'll finish up here, Claire. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay. I know you're on the hot seat. If you vote to fill this position tonight, I'd be highly disappointed. The majority of this board calls themselves Christian conservatives, but everything here is unethical and improper. If you, this is what your description of Christian is, count me out. Okay? I'm really tired of that title when you're doing this disservice to our community. You're deceitful and you're unethical. Secondly, we do not need to add, hire an interim superintendent while we do this job, because I have a feeling that that's gonna be your next step, that you'll just point Dr. Smith as your interim. We have very, why would we add anybody else to our payroll? We already have capable people in Central Office that can run this district while you do this right. There is no need to rush this, and I'm asking you to delay this until you properly advertise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bullock, if I can just, Neil Bullock is next up. Yeah, Catherine's, Catherine's at the podium. I'm assuming Catherine is, thank you. Catherine's at the podium. Neil's after Catherine.
Catherine Edwards, I'm a Pencrest parent. There are nine members of the Pencrest staff which make six figures. Those nine people account for over a million dollars' worth of our payroll each year. The highest-paid individual is our superintendent, Dr. Glasspool, who made over $151,000 last year. Obviously, that speaks to the importance that we place on this position. Most of us learned that Dr. Glasspool had tendered his resignation through a Facebook post or a news media. We learned that they were introducing or interviewing candidates the same way. I've not seen a single official communication originating from Pencrest, either announcing his departure nor advertising for the replacement. The district website lists openings for coaches and substitutes, not a whisper of an opening for a superintendent, which begs the question, how the three applicants interviewed knew to apply? I fear that in a few moments, this board will take the foolish step of hiring Dr. James Smith for this position, the single most important job in the district if salaries are to be believed. For a successful applicant, this position should have the support and trust of the community, of the staff that he's expected to lead, and, most importantly, the community. Now, it would be a disservice for him if the district were to hire him under these circumstances. He would begin his tenure under the power of nepotism and a shadow of suspicion by a community and an atmosphere of distrust from his staff. This is setting him up to fail. Even if you are the best guy for the job...
Somebody who doesn't know policy.
Yeah, even if you are the best guy for the job, you still will be the best guy for the job in January. Why are we rushing this? Why are you so afraid to set your guy up against actual people with credentials? We vet Walmart staff. We vet Walmart staff with more decision-making than you guys who've shown for this position. Again, the highest-paid person by $19,000 than highest-paid person. And I assume they sweeten the deal. I mean, you know, we can't, we've worked, the teachers have worked without a contract for two years. You guys have nickel-ed and dimed them and whined about how much money is in the payroll. And I just assume that you will find a couple more dollars to kind of get him here on board at Pencrest. Where'd you find that money, and why can't you give it to the teachers? In one short month, the community will vote on what the new configuration of this board will look like, and will remember what you've done here today. It seems more, it's ludicrous for you guys to shoehorn somebody into this position when he won't even have your backing, because a lot of you will not be here come January. For once, I've spoken up here to you guys several times, for once, I need you to do what you swore an oath of office to do. I need you to speak for these people here. All right? We're standing up and speaking to you and telling you and begging you what it is that we want and what we don't want. And what we don't want to be is saddled with a superintendent that we can't trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil Bullock, next is Loren and Zorian Edwards. I apologize if I mispronounced that. Mr. Bullock?
Thank you. My name's Neil Bullock. I'm a resident of Rockdale Township, alumni of Cambridge Springs High School, and a concerned parent of two daughters at CSHS. The reason we're all here tonight is because of the announcement for a meeting to hold a special vote for the position of superintendent, our district's educational leader. Normally, a district would at least attempt to be transparent and include the name of the potential hire with the meeting announcement. At Pencrest. Once again, the community is kept in the dark while some members of the board hope to push the vote through for their candidate of choice in hopes that there are few in attendance to notice. That didn't happen tonight. The timeline and quality of the search for this superintendent speaks volumes of the commitment and priorities of this board. What happened to naming a current administrator as acting superintendent is an interim measure so a thorough process could be conducted. There was no public posting for the superintendent position. Only three candidates were considered. Yet here we are. The board has apparently made up their mind based on a single round of interviews, assumably minimal vetting of the candidate, and definitely no involvement of all the stakeholders that you profess to be accountable to. Successful boards do not make abrupt and irresponsible decisions like this. A search for an educational leader should not be a quick and easy process. One would think that a functional board would take this seriously and conduct a thorough search by using resources available to them, as they have in the past, through the IU5 or possibly through the Pennsylvania School Board Association. That is, if they wanted what's best for the students and the Pencrest community. A functional board would, a functional board would start the process first by notifying Pencrest families, making them aware of the superintendent's search. The process should be conducted methodically through careful planning and discussion on how best to proceed. A vision and timeline should be established, and ideally, insights would be gathered from discussions with all stakeholders, including Central Office administrators, principals, teachers, support staff, parents, community members, and students. Public forums could be scheduled and surveys created for community members to express what they would want from an educational leader. All of this should be taken into account to ensure Pencrest is getting the highest-qualified leader that aligns with our community and meets the needs of our students. Of course, none of this has been done. Several board members can be linked to a platform that preaches, quote, "Empowering parents and students, that parents will be included and informed in every aspect of their child's advancement while at Pencrest. Difficulties will be shared and resolved with parental involvement, student input considered for district improvements, tell us what's working and what needs tweak. Frequent town halls will allow parents to sound off on concerns and actually get answers to questions," end quote. Sounds great, but your actions to date indicate otherwise. You wouldn't have called for a voting meeting tonight if you hadn't made up your mind already. So you calling this meeting tonight, Mr. D. Francesco, along with those you recruited to orchestrate it, shows the continued dysfunction, lack of transparency, and complete disregard to the students and parents in Pencrest. In closing, I sincerely hope the majority vote will be no to your proposed action, or at least table this topic given the overwhelming community concern. I also ask that you reconsider by making the investment into a formal candidate search with the IU5, PSBA, or other third-party consulting firm to provide a larger pool of candidates. I think I speak for everyone here tonight in saying, "We just want what's best for Pencrest." Thank you.
Loren or Zorian Edwards?
Hello. My name is Loren or Zorian Edwards, and I am a current student at Sagertown High School. I speak for myself and myself alone. I am no stranger when it comes to meetings like this, as I'm sure you're aware. However, this is the first time I have found that the board decided to hire someone for a position before it was even voted upon. I have heard you speak on how patriotic we should be, how your vote matters, how we should speak up and use our voices. However, this situation unravels all of those claims from the past. This is what makes me, a student, question just how many of those votes were real in the past? How many of those votes were decided upon before I even stepped in the door? Before I came up? Before I came up and spoke to you? Considering the fact you don't recognize me or my mother outside of these meetings after being present for almost every single board meeting for the last two school years, it leads me to question that even further. When you changed the agenda to allow more public commentary, was it simply a ploy? I'm getting ahead of myself here. Let's look at the situation at hand. This individual could be very well-qualified, communicative, and a good fit for this job. However, the way this search for a superintendent was conducted is unethical, disrespectful to the school district, and a poor representation of your character and of your students. You know that you are representing your students, right? I quote myself in this, as I have spoken at these meetings before. Many people have been hurt due to your lack of transparency. I have been hurt, your students have been hurt, and your staff has been hurt. Being active in this school district comes with its costs. I have faced direct harassment. My mother has been harassed, teachers have been harassed. And lastly, I've been discredited for my own words by some members of the community watching these meetings. I've gone through proper channels on how to deal with this. Every single time, I'm told, "Just because someone disagrees with you doesn't mean it's harassment." But what has been said and done to me, my mother, my peers, and my teachers goes far beyond disrespectful lines. Now, I fear for any one of these students mentioned by name here at these board meetings, considering the amount of harassment I have faced outside of this. Thank you for your time.
I apologize, I forgot to announce the next speaker, Art Hoffman, and then Randy Stiborski? Randy, I apologize if I mispronounced that. Mr. Hoffman?
Sorry I didn't bring my TV crew like I normally do when I talk to the board here, but I like to get the word out. My name's Art Hoffman. I'm seventy-one, resident of Richmond Township in Pencrest School District, and I'm a retired businessperson. I'm here to express my dismay at how the majority of this board are conducting themselves and continuing to make a mockery of what is right for the Pencrest students, faculty, parents, and residents. Every month, I attend one of these meetings where I watch the Pencrest School Board meetings on Armstrong, and afterwards, I scratch my head, and you'll notice I don't have any hair. Okay? But I scratch my head in awe and wonder if I had really just finished watching a Jerry Springer show with Bozo the Clown as the guest host. The school district is a joke, Luigi, and you know it.
Do you have anything to say about the candidates?
Yes, I do, and I'll get to that if you don't mind.
I'm not a candidate.
The absence of respect for one another, Robert's Rule of Order, and the law is contemptible. But this latest tactic by the board majority to rush into hiring a new superintendent just before board elections certainly hits a new low. And it's likely being pushed through because they, the majority, have already made up their minds who the winner will be, and that winner will share their same twisted mindset. First of all, my understanding is that this opening was not posted as required by Pennsylvania state law. Look it up, guys, which states that, and I'll quote, "All schools in Pennsylvania are required to advertise all job openings." This was not advertised. That makes it illegal. You can't hire anybody tonight. Next. Furthermore, there is no urgency, because Mr. Glasspool is leaving before the end of his contract. You, as the board, have the final say as to when his release date is. And if you don't believe me, look at the contract. You guys sign with him. So why must we now rush to the new superintendent when a person who's very well-qualified has already been appointed acting supervisor? What's the rush, guys? I know what it is. There's an election coming up. And the Pencrest seven minus three are not gonna win, because they can be the better Pencrests. I could go on and on and on with what's wrong with this board and what's been done over the years. But I'm not. I'm gonna be a nice guy tonight. But the bottom line is logic says the new teacher contract has been ignored for at least two years and will cost the taxpayers much more money the longer this candidate is kicked down the road, especially with the high interest rates and inflation we are seeing now and the near future. So why hasn't a similar urgency been assigned to that critical issue? Because what you're gonna look at now is even higher taxes and a bigger deficit in this district. But y'all are incompetent that are on the Pencrest seven minus three. I will also add here that there's a rumor circulating, and I reiterate, it's a rumor, that the board majority has even a more devious plan. And that is to oust the current board member and replace that person by the appointment of another current board member who lost reelection in the primary. Should this occur, it once again demonstrates the totalitarian mentality and the narrow-mindedness of the board majority, also known as the Pencrest seven minus three, and their dysfunction and nonsense the community has seen and will continue to see through 2024 and '25. This board needs to step up to the plate. I'm tired of hearing, "We're all good Christians." I'll tell you what. Not in my world. You've gotta get your act together, guys, because you're killing the school district. I've seen it out through our board. I've lived... I've got a good career over my life. I made my money, and I started at the bottom. And it was my high school education and a few teachers that really steered me, steered me on the right path. You guys are killing every one of these students in this school. You're jeopardizing their futures, and it's wrong. And you need to stop the agenda you've got, get your heads out of the pastures, work together, and make decisions that give these kids and their parents results, not words.
Karen Myers is on deck. Randy?
Good evening. Randy Stiborski, Vanango Township, Cambridge Springs graduate. I stand before you today not only as a parent, but also as a voice representing the concerns shared by countless parents, both present here and at home. The impending decision before this board regarding our next superintendent holds immense significance for the future of my daughter's education, as well as the education of all the Pencrest students. It's only natural that we question the process and the methodology behind such a momentous choice. In my experience, superintendent searches that are best have an extensive timeline, an in-depth search, and they follow policy. Let's delve into the existing policy of Pencrest. First, specifically, policy 011, which pertains to school governance and the code of conduct. This policy serves as a reminder that we reside in a republic. And you, as members of this board, are entrusted with the responsibility of addressing the needs of the people. According to this policy, you are obligated to engage with all community stakeholders. While I understand that three of you were never elected, it remains crucial that you adhere to the rules outlined in the board policy and uphold the principles of our republic. The question we must ask is, why are you disregarding the demands of your constituents? It seems they would prefer an extensive, in-depth search for superintendent. Secondly, I draw your attention to Policy 302. It addresses the employment of superintendent. On today's agenda, there's a proposal to vote on a three- to five-year contract of superintendent. However, the school code mandates that a non-commissioned candidate should be offered a one-year contract under the provision of acting superintendent. These district policies and school codes are in place to safeguard not only yourselves, but the district and the taxpayers. Why are you choosing to overlook your own policies? Why deviate from the established practices? The last superintendent search an extensive process which conducted leveraging from the resources of the IU. To my knowledge, this position hadn't even been publicly posted, yet we had an external candidate interviewed. I ask again, why are you disregarding the demands of the stakeholders, especially parents? There's two glaring inconsistencies I'd like to highlight. I possess a copy of your campaign platform. In it, you emphasize the need to actively engage all parents and ensure their involvement in their child's education, with transparency being a key principle. Yet there's no transparency, there's no community involvement. Raise your hand if you're a parent in this district. Today, these parents are coming forward to provide their input. You didn't ask for it, but they did. I mean, you campaigned that you would, but beside the point. We also recognize that you may not share the same perspective, as most of you board members do not actually have children in the district. However, we are, and we're concerned, and you're jeopardizing our children's education. Mr. President and his group campaigned on the necessity of constitutional principles and enhanced civic instruction in our schools, something he and I agree on. However, once again, you appear to be deviating from your core principles and your platform of our constitution. Your primary role is to represent the desires and needs of your constituents. It seems you'd rather make decisions based on cronyism rather than American values. Your decision to vote today will serve as a testament to your true motivation. Is your priority really aligned with what's best for students and parents? Will you listen to the parents and act in their best interests? Or will you succumb to cronyism and nepotism? The entire Penncrest community is watching, eager to see where your alliance truly lies.
Tori Kenny is up next.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Myers, I live in Cambridge Springs, I'm also a parent in the school district. I'm speaking tonight because I am concerned about the purpose of this meeting, the potential hasty hiring of a superintendent candidate. I want to start my comments by reading, simply reading what I wrote regarding this issue on a community member's Facebook page and what that individual responded with, as I believe those comments cover the majority of the thoughts in this room tonight. And I said on this page, I said, "I addressed this issue when speaking with the board last week during Cambridge Springs Town Hall meeting and also in their survey. I asked them to take their time and wisely choose the right person instead of pushing someone through. Apparently, what I said to them in both forms was ignored. That's discouraging." Did you guys, did you read the surveys that people did, or was that just a formality? Like, because I don't think it was read. The person they're considering may be a wise choice, so my issue with this hasty vote has nothing to do with that person, someone of whom I have no knowledge. Trying to rush this very important decision at a very important time for the school district, at the very least, gives the perception of self-serving corruption and lack of transparency. With that said, I will continue to pray for the school board while encouraging them to serve with humility, wisdom, and unity, and to listen to district residents and outside wise counsel. May the students be the number one priority for board members and the superintendent, whoever that ends up being. And I got this response from the original poster that a person on Facebook I was writing to. This person said, "I agree, I am just so disheartened. This is the perfect opportunity to search the market and hire the best candidate for Penncrest. They are not interested in doing what they were elected to do and what is best for Penncrest. They are only interested in their personal agenda. As I spoke about during the Cambridge Springs Town Hall listening meeting, you have no clear and unified vision for the school district. Your actions and continual infighting communicate to me that the students aren't your priority. Sadly, like our politicians in DC and Harrisburg, your personal agendas appear to be your priority. Look at research about effective school boards, and you'll find they all have a unified and clear vision for the school district. You'll also find that their school districts are performing better. The leadership, or lack thereof, on a school board sets the tone for the whole school district. Please ask yourself what tone you are setting with this decision to hastily push through an unvetted superintendent candidate without board unity, without a proper search and deliberation process, without outside help, and without truly listening to community members. If you want to start setting a different tone and make a positive impact, please refrain from taking this vote tonight. Please add Mr. Smith to a proper pool of candidates to be more fully vetted and decided between. Please honestly ask yourself... Please honestly ask yourself if you're leading with righteous, selfless motives. If you're not, please decide to change that right away. I may not agree with how things are being done, but I do want to say thank you for doing your very difficult and important position. Know that this large attendance tonight is not about politics, it's out of concern for our schools and students, it's out of a desire for a wise decision to be made. Also, as I did in the last meeting, and I prayed for you there, please know that you are being prayed for, as are the schools and students of Penncrest. One thing I pray, and this should have been said at the beginning, that I pray is that you and everyone in this school district will better live out James 1:19, which says, "Everyone should be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to become angry." Thank you for your time, God bless.
Scott Stallings is up next. And Miss Kenny?
Hi, my name's Tori Kenny. I live in Cambridge Springs, and I graduated on this very stage in 2008. Sorry, I'm very anxious right now. My time in school was not a very happy time in my life. The only thing that kept me going was the support of some of my teachers. A few of them are in this room right now. These teachers are people that you are now harming. At the time, I didn't know, but I was struggling with PTSD, and in part, that was caused by school policies that my teachers weren't able to protect me from, even though they did their best. I am queer, and I am non-binary, and I was terrified of my existence for nearly 20 years of my life. I could say more about that, but I don't want the young people in this audience to be traumatized by my own. Your actions in recent months have made this district a laughingstock of the entire nation and even abroad. I am honestly ashamed, or I'm sorry, I am honestly not even surprised at the extremely underhanded actions that have been taken here, including yet another violation of the Sunshine Act. And I am not surprised, but I am disgusted. If you truly believe that this person that you plan to vote on tonight is the best option, then there should not have been a problem... Sorry, I lost my voice. There should not have been a problem with conducting the proper hiring process, rather than trying to rush through someone suspiciously quickly and quietly. We know why you're doing that. By doing it in this way, you're showing that you have no interest in protecting anything other than your ideal view of the status quo. You're only proving that you hate teachers and you hate students. Your legacy is already set, but the only decent option you have is to cancel this vote and follow that proper hiring process. Allow for candidates outside of those that will further your agenda to interview and go through proper vetting. This vote should not take place until after January at minimum, let alone the adequate amount of time required to search for the best candidate. I thank the community for each time listening to me, and I hope that you all choose to support competent people in the upcoming vote for school board. And a note from my grandmother. Tovresti, brekenati. Thank you.
Michael Muckenhau, I'm sorry, Michael, I mispronounced that. Stallings now, on deck, Michael's on deck. Thank you, Mr. Stallings.
Scott Stallings, Sacred Town Borough, two children in the Sacred Town Elementary School District. So I had something written out, but it's pretty much aligned with, you know, just take your time, slow down, but what I want to concentrate on here in the next few seconds, and this goes back to my vocational training as a pastor, a licensed pastor, and what somebody that has a degree in theology. Judas Iscariot, one of the original 12 disciples, sold Jesus out for 30 pieces of silver. Now, six of y'all that sit on this board currently espouse your Christianity all the time, okay? And as one of your supporters, two that are currently running in your two cohorts, y'all are the only truly godly people running. That's what was told to me. That indicates my personal relationship that I've had with Jesus since I was a boy. And I spent thousands of dollars getting a theology degree from Southeastern University, an assembly of God, yes, I was brought up Pentecostal, one of the crazy ones, if you will, I don't care, but it's something that is dear to me, my personal relationship with Jesus Christ. And it's not my job to beat people with the head with it. But when you are doing things that appear shady, that appear underhanded, that appear to be of cronyism, you may not be selling out for 30 pieces of literal silver, but metaphorically, you are.
Yes.
And just remember this, in the Gospel of Matthew, Jesus said, Matthew 19, King James, I'll go old school, but Jesus said, "Suffer the little children, and forbid them not to come unto me, for such is the kingdom of heaven." Now, I'm not here to proselytize, I'm not here to recruit, I'm just here to be able to take my moment and speak what's on my heart and my mind. If you care for the children of this district, do not rush this vote. Thank you.
Carla Brown is up to Mr. Muckenhau.
Hi, my name's Mike Muckenhau, I grew up in Cambridge, I graduated class of 1989. I've had children, I've had family, all went to this school. Now, I wrote a speech based on, I knew a lot of people would say a lot of the something, so I'm just going to keep reading it. I really hate public speaking, almost as much as I like to give my opinion out to anybody who listens to me. But boys, it's frustrating to have to keep hearing about the crap you and your co-conspirators keep pulling. I had a bunch of things I wanted to say, but I'm sure many of them have already been brought up by other conscientious members of this community, so I'll try to keep it quick. Since you came onto your dictatorial power, actively working only to put what I would call yes men on your board, our district and communities have only suffered. Your leadership has brought our district into multiple lawsuits, tons of bad press, and a deluge of good teachers leaving our schools. And then there's the Crawford County PA Politics 2.0 Facebook page, which many of what was formerly known as the Penncrest Seven seem to love to post to. It's managed by men who regularly do their best to make the claim that a host of our teachers and others in our community are pedophiles, groomers, and even Satanists. It's a veritable cornucopia of hate speech, fear mongering, and just outright lies and conspiracy theories. It even claims to be nondiscriminatory, although I personally know a ton of people kicked off the page for challenging the lunacy being peddled there.
I don't kick them.
This echo chamber is literally built for people just like you, Luigi, and everything you've said and done over the last several years are your legacy of shame. And now you're pulling what appears to be another load of horse crap. There's a question for the board. By raising of hands, how many of you on the board participated in any meetings where a decision was made to offer the job to James Smith?
Just for clarification, there's no obligation, so if they don't raise their hands, please don't take them.
It would help to...
I understand that, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, none of you really...
I don't mean to pick a fight with you, I just wanted...
I understand. Then why has he already sent out a letter stating that the job was his, essentially tendering his resignation? Where would he get that idea? And if he pulled the trigger without anyone offering him the job, doesn't that mean he's inept? Why would he hire someone like that? Now, come on, isn't the whole reading for this meeting today just a sham, a staged play? Well, based on the response here, no one is falling for it. So at this point, I'm reaching out to those on the board who still care about how your friends and neighbors feel about what has been going on. I don't expect Luigi Bobrovlesky to do the right thing and just put in place a temporary acting superintendent until a truly thorough search has been done, but I'll ask the rest of you to act like Christian men and women you claim to be. Show some honesty and integrity, and don't support what appears to have occurred. 1 Corinthians 15:33 states that, "Bad company corrupts good character." If this is true, you have a chance to show this community that you can rise above that. And if not, well, everyone here will know just what kind of person you really are. I won't forget, and I doubt the majority of these people here will either. Thank you.
Folks, Jeff Gable is next. And I just remind the speakers, because we've kind of digressed a little bit into less discussion about whether they should take action tonight, and a little more into personal attacks of the school board members. I'm usually pretty indulgent, they're elected officials, they take a job. I just remind you, let's try to minimize the personal attacks. I don't know any of you, I honestly don't know any of these people. I met Luigi earlier today, so I'm just telling you from my perspective, ignore me, ignore me if you want to ignore me, I'm just asking you to try to do that, thank you.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
No.
No.
All right. I think she's going to turn the volume up.
Speak louder.
Well, I'm in the microphone, and I don't know that I could speak louder, but maybe the volume could go a little bit. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Carla Brown, and I am a resident of Cambridge Springs. I have children that go to Sacred Town. First and foremost, I would like to thank you, the solicitor who is here tonight, instead of the normal solicitor. You have been very respectful, and you have been very accommodating to the public here tonight, and that hasn't happened in a while, so I very much appreciate that for you, sir. I would like to say that I am unsure how this board is able to appoint a new superintendent if they have not gone through the process of publicly acknowledging a vacancy. According to paperwork that the board president must fill out and turn into the Department of Education, he has to affirm that a vote by this board was cast that created such a vacancy before that vacancy can be filled. The breakdown of that vote is also required. I have that paperwork right here. It's available on the Department of Education website. If you look under commissioned officers, you'll find this. Anyone can find this. If I am capable, as a concerned parent, to find this within two minutes on the Department of Education website, it is very concerning to me that the board president didn't know that it existed, obviously.
He didn't care.
None of that has been done. As a matter of fact, this board removed the official resignation of Dr. Glasspool at last month's work session meeting, even though it was still not available for the public to see. I was at that meeting, I have that session recorded. It was not on the agenda on the Thursday voting meeting. It is also not on the agenda tonight to vote for the official resignation of Dr. Glasspool. I have done a little more research. As far as I can see from the Department of Education, James Smith is not a commissioned officer currently. From his LinkedIn account, I could see that he started working for Mill Creek Township School District in July of 2004 as a principal. He had received his master's in education and... He had received his master's in education and a K-12 principal certification that same year. He has consistently worked as a principal within that district since then. In 2009, he received a doctorate in administration and leadership. I assume Mill Creek has similar scenario as Pencrest regarding paying for continuing education of employees. Since James Smith received his doctorate in 2009, there have been at least four assistant superintendent positions and at least four superintendent positions available within Mill Creek. As a matter of fact, when looking for a new superintendent in 2020, it was reported that Mill Creek conducted nationwide search. Mill Creek, although paying for Dr. Smith's higher education, has never wanted to utilize it. Surely, he applied for these jobs, why wouldn't he? He obviously wanted to work as a higher administrator, hence the doctorate. However, he was never promoted. So if that district did not see him as qualified or competent enough to hold a commissioned office, why should our school district actually go through the process of insuring his office now? Our school district has unique challenges, and while Dr. Smith may have the education, I do not feel confident that he has the experience that a school district such as ours deserves. Do not lock our district into a three to five-year contract with someone who has only limited building experience. There are other options.
Jessica Ashbaugh is on deck.
My name is Jeff Gable. I married a, thank you. I married a person from Pencrest School District. I have fathered two kids that graduated from Pencrest School District, one a salutatorian. I have two grandkids going to Pencrest School District. I sub for Pencrest School District only because it's retired. What else am I going to do except help the kids, whatever they need? I've spent many years volunteering for the band. This weekend, when I started, the internet taking off, I was so upset, I asked to come up here and talk, but it's already been said, and what I had here. What you really, I think you need to hear is my wife, who was HR person for 30 years for this district, worked under seven, worked with seven superintendents. If I would like to have her in the rest of my time. It'll be joyous.
Mrs. Gable, if you would just be kind enough for me, because I think everybody probably knows your name and your address.
Denise Gable, I live in Hateful Township, and I was the HR Assistant Administrative Assistant for 30 years for the district. I was recently retired.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Traditionally, the policy is that time cannot be yielded, but we're going to make a little bit of exception for you this evening.
When I retired, I was given a sound piece of advice from one of my coworkers who had retired. He told me to walk away and don't look back, because you won't leave the job if you don't. I tried that, and I've done that very well for a year. However, this really upsets me. As my husband said, I've worked under seven superintendents. I have been part of six superintendent searches. Each one's been a little bit different, but they've all at least been legitimate, they've been handled professionally. The interviews, if the district so chose to pick their own candidate, everything went through the school board secretary. Nothing went through anybody's personal emails. If the school board secretary didn't get it, then they weren't even considered. And if it was so chosen that it was an outside agency such as the IU, then everything was handled by them. They did the vetting, they did everything that needed to be done, and actually even the initial interview process, and brought like three best candidates to the board, to me. So, as I say, this is not being done in any sort of an ethical manner. Had, had the board members all gone through the new board member training required as PSBA member, or through PSBA upon their appointment, they should be fully aware of this stipulation. You don't accept anything through your email, your personal emails. You shouldn't do any Pencrest business through your personal emails. So obviously, somewhere along the line, somebody wrote down, and thus here we are in another embarrassing moment, and could lead to another lawsuit, just like the districts had to pay time and time again. The other thing I really, really stress is, in whomever's appointed for this position as a new superintendent, make sure they have experience at the central office level. This board has scaled back our administrative team over the past few years to the point that administrators, not only at central office, but in the schools, are doing way more things under one umbrella than's ever been done before. Things fall through the cracks. They can't do anymore, and there is no way you can ask one of our central office administrators to be a mentor to a new superintendent who doesn't come to the district hitting the ground running and ready to leave the district and lead our students. So, again, please just think about that as you're making these decisions.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jessica Ashbaugh, and I'm Woodcock Township resident. I come to you today a concerned parent and community member with how this process is being handled. I'll be the first to admit that hiring a superintendent is not my area of expertise. It's not what I'm qualified to do. I'm willing to admit that. But I did a little research online, and last time with Dr. Glasspool, we pooled resources, no pun intended, from the IU. A four-month search was done to find and vet proper candidates. While the candidates may be, they might have great qualities, it feels like this was done in a sneaky manner. And I have a slew of things I was going to write or read out loud, but the trust in the board is diminishing further and further. It's pretty bad when kids at the elementary school level are wondering what's going on. We can do better for our children. Had there been an open forum, had there been, I don't know, a survey sent out for parents to ask questions, as petty as it may be, my question would be is, what are your thoughts on field trips? That might be silly, but guess what? Field trips are one of the only times some kids will get to experience the outside world based off of their circumstances. Please allow our children opportunity. The candidates that are up for vote, please put them through a proper vetting process. If they are the best candidate, that will come to fruition. But please, open honesty, please stop with the scoffing, please stop with name-calling. From all of us, not just board members, but even us as the community, let us show our children we will love and love well. Thank you.
Ms. Licky?
Good evening. I'm from Guy's Mills. My two children graduated from Maplewood High School, and I was a teacher in this district for 26 years. I was looking up a description for the role of superintendent, and I came across something from the University of Texas. And it said, "Superintendents have in essence become the living embodiment of their school districts. Consequently, the role has become increasingly relationship-oriented, with superintendents needing to possess strong communication and interpersonal skills to rally entire communities behind a goal. Being a superintendent is about building relationships. You have to make connections with community members, outside organizations. You have to get your parents to buy in, your staff to buy in. Inspiring others means wearing as many hats as needed to promote a shared vision." This description makes sense to me, and such a superintendent would certainly be a welcome addition to this district. However, by having the majority on this board following this path to hiring a superintendent, how is he going to be able to build relationships with community members, staff, and parents when there will likely be a significant lack of trust and respect from the beginning? Is this a positive way, excuse me, to begin a new chapter in Pencrest? Sadly, this person may be an excellent, excellent candidate, a great principal, may be loved by his staff, students, and parents with excellent credentials and inspiring vision for our district. But sadly, many might question the motive of someone who is willing to accept a job of this significance under these circumstances. This puts them in a very awkward position from the get-go. So I'm trying to clog, I'm trying to get some things out. So now, rumors are running rampant throughout the community. Shouldn't they be addressed before you take this final vote? A superintendent is an integral part of a school district, and choosing one should not be determined by who knows who or be hired in haste without the entire board included in discussions and the final decision. It's hard to tell what might transpire at tonight's meeting, but I hope that you've given serious thought about what you're planning to do. Will this be another rest decision that makes it seem as if there might have been some discussions held and decisions made outside of the official and lawful board forum? The current board has been full of surprises, and they've seldom been good ones, making our school district somewhat infamous in recent years by making headlines not only in local media outlets, but national ones as well. So please, I respectfully ask you to put aside any personal, political, or religious agendas and do something that puts Pencrest in a positive light and allow it to get back to its stated mission, to provide resources and opportunities that challenge students, assess their educational progress, provide a system of support, and empower all, and I'm going to repeat, all, students to become competent lifelong learners. Honesty, integrity, transparency, transparency, and inclusion would make for a much better Pencrest school district. Oh, and a reminder that this is banned book week. Celebrate your right to read and read a bad book. I have lots of good suggestions. Thank you. Thank you very much.
That brings us to the end of the list of 14 that have registered. We're at about an hour, almost an hour on the nose for public comment. I'd ask the board, is it your desire to extend this for those that? Let me redo this. Is there anyone that hasn't signed in that wants to say something other than what's already been said? I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I'll ask the board, because it's not up to me, it's up to you. You're well past the half an hour, but do you want to extend it to hear anybody that has not registered previously? Quite honestly, we do work for these people.
Yes.
Okay, hearing no objection. I'd ask anybody that hasn't registered, did not register, if you can come up and, folks, if you can queue up. I am going to try to keep you to the two minutes. Everybody did a really good job of kind of staying within the five minutes. So if you could, if you could just try to stay within the two minutes, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Name, address, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening to the school board and the audience. My name is Stella Rijero, and I'm a resident of Torrey Township. I am also a very, very proud Pencrest graduate from Maplewood, as is my husband, and we are now the parents of a son who is at Maplewood as well, and we are also taxpayers. I'm going to keep this very short, because I am reiterating a lot of what my peers have said. I'm asking you just to put the brakes on this decision. I'm asking you to please publicly and widely advertise the search for superintendent. Let there be a thorough and transparent search for our new top leader. We should all be in this room for the same reason, and that is because we believe in this district, we believe in the kids, and we care about all the students and our faculty and staff. So for all of those reasons, and for all of these people here, please put the brakes on this decision tonight, and give this district the proper search and the care that this matter deserves for our wonderful school district. Thank you very much.
Sergeant Damon Adams, please.
My name's Sean Spencer. I live in Cambridge Springs, and all my kids go to Sacred Town. My, my great aunt Betty, my grandmother went to Sacred Town, my Aunt Denise went to Sacred Town, my family all goes to Sacred Town, all right? We've been in Pencrest our whole lives. So all of us, being from this area, growing up in this, in this area, we all had school boards, just like you guys, well, the number of you guys anyways. And you know what? I don't remember any of them, not a soul of them. My parents don't remember them, my grandparents don't remember, because they shut the hell up and did their job.
That's all. So out of all of you guys, out of all of you guys, who, who of you guys can raise their hand and say that you've done things that would make your parents proud on this board? How many of you could? No. Until you pay taxes in this township, in this district, you don't get to talk. I'm asking you. You shut that thing up, sir. I'm sick and tired, I am sick and tired of you guys causing such a problem that you put everybody in disgrace here.
Sir, I'm just going to ask you, if, and I'll let you talk, I'll let everybody talk, but you're not going to put the board members in a situation.
In a situation, do they have to be responsible for their actions? That's, that's not what you're going to put me in?
If you would, if you just let me talk.
Okay. Spit it out.
They're not going to respond to raise your hand or not. So if they don't, which they're under no obligation to do that, you take that as an indication that they are something that you've described them to be. So I'm just telling you that. I'm going to let you continue, just so there's no confusion, if the board members just sit here in response to your asking them to raise their hand.
Got you.
Thank you, sir, I'm done.
All right. That's fine.
Appreciate it.
So, what's that? You have something to say to me?
Continue.
Okay. Anyways, so, and obviously, it's obvious to our whole community that there's a group of board members that do everything under cloak and dagger, and it's absolutely ridiculous. Everybody can, here can see it, everybody knows about it, so why do we continue to accept it?
Or not. He's not on the ballot anymore.
But the fact of the matter is, is until you guys get your act together and start acting for your community, for your people, for your taxpayers, it's going to continue to be the biggest crap show in Crawford County. I'm all done.
Brian Custard, and I'm from the southern tip of Pencrest School District. I just want to say congratulations for all the smiles from creating this. This was created. Everybody was invited here. If, if you had gone to the Better Pencrest site, if you had gone to Mr. Brooks' site, you would see the invitations to come here. This was created. When there was a problem with the school being shut down, it was packed. Every seat, it seems to be only half-full. To me, it seems to be that the left is here. It seems to me. It seems to me...
If I could just ask the board, folks, please, I'm assuming that there's disagreement on certain things. Once again, let's, let's just, we've heard a lot of talk about how others act outside Penn Crest, including in Harrisburg and Washington DC. Let's let an individual, let's set a good example, let's let an individual that you may completely disagree with say their piece the way everybody else has had an opportunity to say their piece, and then we can move on. I'm sorry, sir, continue, please.
That's okay. I also wanted to thank you for saying you have to have children to be concerned with this district. My wife and I are unable to have children, so thank you for putting that on us. So, my problem is everyone's up here and, and they're up here attacking these people for what they do. Yes, there's been some nastiness, I've seen it, there's been lawsuits, but have all the lawsuits been from the conservative Christians? No. They have not. They have not. What about your kids? So you have somebody who disagrees with you, so you have to interrupt them. You have to not allow them to speak, right?
Sir, please just address your comments, address your comments to the board, please.
Okay. Thank you for the setup meeting. Thank you. Don't even try. Okay, yes, it was on the district website. I'd just like to see how many people here are teachers. How many people here were teachers? Yeah, I don't need to know that.
Folks, please, sir, the issue that's on the agenda is the potential to hire a new superintendent.
Right, I know that. But the steps that have been taken to discuss that, which have not...
Folks, please, please, this, this, he'll finish his comments if we stop being interrupted. I haven't, I haven't, I haven't told anybody their time's up, so please, once again, and I get it, I get the emotion, just please...
So there were, I believe there were a number of people that were interviewed and some people didn't make that meeting to see the interviews. No, I'm not on the board. I'm not on the board. Because of my friends, I'm running with friends who are on the board. So I was not at a meeting. I was not at any meeting. I was not at any meeting, I don't know Dr. Smith, I don't know any of the others, but there were three. And, how much time do we need? Thirty days? More? It's thirty days now, I believe. I believe that the process... Can I speak? I believe that the process has to be followed correctly as everyone has stated tonight. But I also know that there's an election coming up because I'm on the ballot, thankfully, because the cables didn't get me kicked off.
Mr. Custer, I'm just going to, you're, you're a little bit over two minutes and I've given you a lot of leeway here, so really, just a point before the agenda, I'll give you an opportunity to finish, but if you can summarize and finish focused on the matter of this...
Focusing on this vote tonight.
Correct, thank you, sir.
And I told you all I agree that we need to follow the process. And, there's thirty days still before the election. If that's the goal, is to get someone appointed before an election comes and perhaps the majority changes on the board, there's still thirty days to do that correctly. Or, as many want to do, I believe, many want to extend it out to January when perhaps their people are on the board with the majority.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Folks, I think we have two more and I think that's going to be the end of it. I'm sorry, sir, your name and address, please.
Matthew Francis, I live at 26465 Mount Pleasant Road, Cambridge Springs Township.
Thank you.
I, I agree with what most of our community has said here tonight. I think it's awesome that I see so many people here that I know don't have children in the school district anymore. Because this is a community decision. We have a lot of great things happening in our communities right now. If you look down Main Street, you look what they've done out at the golf course, the brewery, there are a lot of amazing things happening, especially here in Cambridge, and in the other towns too, but I'm here every day, so they're the ones I see. This decision reflects on what our community is and it needs the time to be properly vetted. And it sounds like things weren't done legally, let alone in good faith. And if you vote to support this hiring right now, it is a slap across the face of this community, whether you have children here or not. Not to mention, it does seem like there's a pretty good legal ground for a lawsuit. And that vote is probably going to also support the waste of even more taxpayer dollars. Dr. Smith may be a great candidate, it just wasn't done properly. And I, I beg of you to look deep and, and ask yourself if this is the right thing to do right now. And that's all, thank you.
My name is Tim Wenzel. I'm a Sagertown resident, I'm a Sagertown parent. I know a couple of you up there. I'll tell you, I'm also a white conservative Christian.
Hey, me too!
There are people who would tell you that I would be supporting what the majority has been doing, they would be wrong. There is only one thing that I am concerned about, that this, with everything that this board has done and what we came here tonight to hear about, that is the future of my child. She is a senior at Sagertown. I've watched these kids grow up. I've seen the harm that has been done in the recent years. I've known this young person almost as long as I've known my daughter. I was proud of her tonight. I don't agree, I mean, I don't agree on everything. We don't have to. That's the beauty of what we have. But I'm tired of seeing our children harmed. And even if Mr. Smith is an incredible superintendent, the pale that is going to be hanging over this is going to further harm this district and our children. And that has to stop.
The community recess, we're going to come back here in a few minutes.
There's one agenda item, so, it's been advertised for the potential appointment. Obviously, a motion needs to be made if they do that, there's really, there's three, as I understand it, there are three individuals that were under consideration. You've heard discussion about potentially tabling this for an extended period of time or for a time period. So, whoever would like to make the motion, the three options are...
Are we allowed to have a discussion or do we have to make a motion?
You really need to make a motion.
Okay, then I make a motion to table this.
We have a motion and I see a second, and I apologize, I don't know everybody's names, I apologize. You have a motion and a second, that would be an opportunity to have a discussion.
Alright, let me just make a couple of comments here because, thank you for coming out, I appreciate all of you. And I will say, I am highly disappointed in the fact that we are sitting here tonight. My son had theater practice tonight, which I missed because of a special meeting, so I'm missing my family event for this. And it's appalling. I have been in Human Resources for 25 years. This is not okay. We did not vet the candidate, we just made a fast decision to elect him. As discussed in the meeting with the interviews, we need to do a recruitment effort and that was the decision. Tim Rowland was there, the only person, there was only one not present, everybody else was here, everybody else. And that was the decision made on September 21st and I expect we followed it.
Any other discussion or comments from the board?
Yes, I want to make a comment. Yeah, I want to make it, just to clarify something, I see that Mrs. Cr- is it Crowe or Lugo? Why, I wanted to use the right pronoun.
She just got married.
Mrs. Lugo came up with a chart. The chart is very inaccurate, okay? It's not factual. I went through that and there are three, three, three sections of the graph that are very inaccurate. Okay? Thank you.
We can certainly entertain RFIs for this too, Luigi, because I've been in HR for 25 years and this, I would have never granted an interview. This candidate would not have had an interview.
Okay, I just, I just, yeah, I just, before members, the motion is to table, so the discussion is related to whether you want to table this or not. Any other comments?
No, I, I, I'm sorry. No, I definitely, we need to table it because after the weekend, I spent the weekend reading our policies and Penn Crest's rules and the laws, and quite honestly, we didn't adhere to any of them. So, we do need to advertise, and somebody mentioned two weeks, and two weeks is not here long enough. We need to put the advertisement out, we need to have somebody else interview our candidates first. So I'm just doing my job. We have to have them vetted properly, and it has to be done in a manner that nobody here, exception of Teresa, Fred says he's interviewed, so he's probably more qualified, but we're not qualified to interview a superintendent of this magnitude. We went through Glasspool, we went through four or five month situation, Brad Whitman was our interim at the time, he did a fantastic job, but he brought to us three or four candidates. When he was all done, and he said, "These are the best candidates, I could find." Glasspool, Patty Feely, I forget the other two gentleman's name. We interviewed them and we picked Dr. Glasspool and let me tell you, we did, we did... Something that's never been illustrated is, first off, it's really reckless on our part. He might be a nice guy, I'm not, I'm not attacking his character, but he has no experience. He never answered any typical questions we asked, like, "What was your building budget? What's your experience, experiences policy?" And a couple other questions I forgot, but he never answered, you say he was the most qualified, he wasn't, he couldn't answer basic questions. We need somebody out there to, we need to advertise, we need somebody in a second party to vet our candidates properly. Then we have a discussion in the public, like we did with Dr. Glasspool, and then we hire. If we can do it in a month, great, if it takes too much, it doesn't matter. We have Mr. Newman, he's our assistant, he will step in, hopefully he'll step in, and I guess we should ask him. But we're not, before we were in trouble. When Healy left, we were in trouble. We're not in trouble now. We have Mrs. Feely, we have Mr. Newman, and they were...
I guess the reason I think that we should table this is, I don't, what I've heard from the citizens out here is the process is under question. And I, I agree with people that the process seems suspect, whether or not it is. I wrote down a timeline based on emails and experiences that I had. September 6th, Dr. Glasspool accepted the position in Belverna. On the 11th, Mr. Bryant forwards an email to the superintendent, Mr. Valeski and to Luigi from Dr. Smith, and Dr. Smith thanks Fred for their discussion the previous day and included his resume. Later that day, the board secretary forwards a separate email to the board with Dr. Smith's resume. We have executive session that evening, we discuss the superintendent position, which we're allowed to discuss in executive session. The next day, as directed, the superintendent reached out to all internal qualified candidates. We had two staff members that were qualified and interested. The other internal candidates stated in one way or another that they didn't feel that they were ready for the job or wanted to work with this board. The interview was set up with those two candidates plus Dr. Smith. I would like to say at this point, I don't know Dr. Smith, I'm sorry for whatever, I don't know his role in this quiet, but... After that was sent out as an email, I said, in an email, I reached out asking why we included only one outside candidate. I expressed concerns about the process and the candidate and I did not get any answers on that. On the 21st, we had interviews, I didn't attend the interviews, Mr. Custer seemed to see that was an issue. I'd interviewed both internal candidates before, found them both to be extremely qualified, and did not feel the need to interview the outside candidate, which I did not believe we should be interviewing at that time. At the end of that meeting, from what I was told, we had three undecided school board members and five votes were split on internal candidates or Dr. Smith. At that time, the board decided to table this and do an external search.
Yes, it is true.
No, there was no vote whatsoever.
Five of us agreed.
Folks, this is not debate, this is discussion, so I...
Okay, Fred, I know you're the only smart person in the room, but five of us agreed.
I guess to go back to what Denise said, you know, Mr. Bryant sent his AOL email out, that's not good policy. After the meeting, board members were meeting in the park, which happens. Two hours later, Fred sent another email saying to cancel the action the board had just agreed on and said we were ready to vote and to cancel the external search. Again, that's not how a good school board operates. The next day, at 9:00 AM, 11 hours after the board had decided to open up the position to external search, Mr. D. Francesco reached out to the superintendent in order the district to advertise for a special voting meeting today. This again is in conflict with what the board had decided as a whole 11 hours previously. Later that day, Dr. Smith sends an email to our superintendent saying, "I meet with my district Monday to discuss the transition, I'll get there as soon as I can." At that point, that seemed as if a decision had been made, and I think that's where a lot of the people are upset. The 24th, we have one board member says he's wrestling with the decision. Later on, Mr. Valeski says he officially supports Dr. Smith. The next day, Dr. Smith and the superintendent speak and he tells our superintendent that he has the five votes. And he told Mill Creek Township School District to post for his position ASAP and he'd start on 11/1. In between, Dr. Smith sent an email to staff at Bell Valley, said the board will approve him tonight. So, the process we have here has flawed from the beginning. We had internal candidates and it's fine, we decided not to hire an internal candidate. We have 18 years of experience interviewing Patty. We have three years of experience with candidates, four? Four. Seems like three is flying by. We have experience with them, I've interviewed them both, I know who they are. The outside candidate, it didn't matter who he was. We did not do things the correct way and that's why I will vote to table this vote.
I don't, I don't have any issue with tabling it either, but I do want to, there have been so many things that were said tonight that are inaccurate, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. We did talk about whether we would use the IU, and the discussion I recall was, they wanted to charge us thousands of dollars to do the interviews and we said we could do them ourselves.
You know, I'm getting tired of you people, you... Now let him finish for God's sake. We allow you extra time to say whatever you want to say. Now let everybody else do and say what they have to say. Go ahead.
So, Dr. Glasspool told us that the IU had identified four potential candidates and we said if those candidates want to be considered, that they should have their resume to us on the same night that we did the other interviews and we would interview them, we got...
on the same night that we did the other interviews, and we would interview them. We got no additional resumes. The only one we got outside of the school district was Dr. Smith. But we would have been happy to interview them, and I don't know what the motivation was, why we didn't get them from the IU.
It wasn't advertised!
Folks, please, please. Point clarification, Mr. Chairman. Everybody in Northwest Pennsylvania, we have a superintendent position.
We'll give you guys some time.
I didn't even know you were the ice.
Folks, if I might count, you've got four votes to table it. It takes five to table it. Let's see if there's somebody else that wants to table it tonight. We've gone all. So let's, let's, any board member that hasn't spoken, I want to give all, any board member that hasn't spoken an opportunity to speak. And then board members, if you want a second opportunity, that'd be fine.
All right. I think we make a big mistake to table this. We're not, we are, we are a republic, which means we govern by the rule of law, not by the mouth, okay? So you know what you want. And I will not vote to favor it.
Any other board members that have a, any other board members that have a comment?
Yeah. Quick to listen, slow to speak. Thank you for that. My quick decision, it wasn't quick, believe me. For me, in my opinion, Dr. Smith, I thought, was a good candidate, to tell you the truth. To be transparent with all you guys, I'm not on Facebook. I don't go into rumors, because the first time I was on here, like, I think Brian was saying that somebody started a rumor about closing Cambridge, and it never happened. And it was a rumor, speculation. I'm not all about that. I'm trying to find truth with certain documents. You know, I have twelve-hour days at work. That's why I was a little late today. I have responsibilities at home and my family at the same time. And my faith is very strong, and my Lord is saved, and you guys all know that. So for me, integrity is huge and transparency is big, in my opinion. And my opinion is different from certain other people's opinion. I apologize. You guys have your beliefs. I have my beliefs. But the main thing is the kids and the community. I heard you guys. Thank you, Pastor. The more I thought about this, the more I'm like, "Yeah, we are rushing it. Are we transparent? Policy 302?" I'm learning all this language as part of the school board. What we need is a vision. What we need is a leader. We need somebody to set the table straight and move forward and start disagreeing and trying to be a community that, again, to be united, is it, is it possible?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know. But I'm sick and tired of waiting when people are arguing or we have disagreement. We want you guys to be involved. We want the parents to be, that's why I'm on the board. And that's what my vision was, to see the community come together as one. And, go ahead. You want to say something? No? Okay, just to come together and try to do something for the kids. I don't care if I get voted in November, to tell you the truth. I don't care. But if there's a board up here that has a vision and wants to set an example for the kids, I'm all in. I'm all in. You know, I have a strong faith. I love Jesus. You guys know that. But don't tarnish hearsay about me or we're gonna crew together and all this stuff, because I don't see it. Maybe I'm blind, and maybe I'm not looking hard enough. But if you want to get to know me, if you want to get to know me, just talk to me. I'll be available out there right after this, and I'll share anything you want about who I am. And I'm not, I'm not, you guys can come at me. Your job is to, is, I'm so happy you guys are here. That's what I wanted. I was out there because of arguments between two people, and I want a new leadership, to be honest with you guys. But what I'm seeing is still an aggressive attack on certain agendas and division. I don't want that. I don't want that. You know, you have your beliefs. I have mine. And we love each other. Well, and find out a decision where we can get together and mend, and then set this whole movement forward, whether or without me. I couldn't care less. It's about the kids. It's about the kids.
Agreed.
So please, you know, let's work on this. We're trying to be more transparent. I'm not knowing the rules and all the regulations and all that. Apparently, you guys didn't know. Apparently, for me, I was in the back going, "Okay, I'm listening." And I listened, and that's why I'm on the table.
I'll let you know, any board members that have an opportunity?
Well, I'm gonna say something similar, as Michael has said. I've been on the board now for a year, and I have worked tirelessly, spent a lot of my time and money in trying to do programs for your kids, trying to get a collaborative committee to get the grades up, and do all kinds of things. And to sit here and listen to the slander that you have over every single board member here that you don't agree with, that's just, that's just crazy. That is not unity. You don't know me either. And I hear that people slandering me and saying things. You don't even know me. I never sat up here and even said I was a Christian and started using Bible verses and all that. You don't know me. So please, save those comments for whatever. I mean, that's just not right to do that. So do the right thing. And today, we're deciding to table it. And we appreciate you coming out here and giving your responses to that, or what you feel about that. But could you just keep the slander down? We do work hard here on the board.
I'm also going to vote to table this tonight. And I'll be honest, it's because of you guys. This man deserves more than this. He does not deserve to be slandered. This is unacceptable. This is completely unacceptable. You guys are trying to ruin a man's reputation. And that's why I'm going to vote to table this tonight.
Any additional comments or discussion? We have a roll call, please? Well, shouldn't we put some parameters around the tabling? What is it that we're actually going to do? It'll be, you've got a work session, my understanding, is a week from tonight. So somebody, if you're gonna untable it, my recommendation would be that you have a discussion at your work session next meeting on the course of action that you're gonna take to do a search for a superintendent, and that that matter be placed on your agenda.
What's it too late for?
The...
Thursday.
Thursday, the 13th, I believe?
Monday night, Tuesday night's the work session.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Tuesday's the work session.
Is there a reason why that has to be, why can't it be, why can't it be proceeded on now? Why can't it then open up to...
You don't have, you don't have it on your agenda to take action, to authorize...
Thank you.
Authorize a search process. Nor do I think, quite honestly, nor do I think you're ready tonight to have that. It's been a long night. So my recommendation is your next work session is Tuesday, the 12th. No, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the 9th.
The 10th.
The 10th. I'll get my dates right. Tuesday, the 10th, and your regular meeting is the 12th. So I would discuss this at the 10th and put it on the agenda for the 12th. You can, if for some reason you want to untable this and put this motion back on for the 12th, you could, or the 14th, you could Thursday. Jeez, I'm tired. Sorry, folks. You can do it in your regular meeting. But that would be my counsel to you.
We gotta remind them that we have to appoint a temporary...
Correct. And you would appoint...
Monday.
The work session. You now have a vacancy in your superintendent. You need to take formal action to appoint an acting superintendent.
That will take place Tuesday.
That's the working session.
That's Tuesday.
We can work through that. I don't know how you advertise your working sessions. The point is, sometime next week, you have to take formal action to appoint an acting superintendent.
But with that, with it, folks, and we can talk about this, and I appreciate, I don't want to get too sidetracked, because you have a matter before you to vote on. I can, I'll stay and answer questions as long as you want me to stay and answer questions tonight.
But right now, since Ken is the assistant superintendent, he is our superintendent right now?
Technically, he's not.
Okay.
I know internally, internally, you've said to him, but from the Department of Education, you have to take formal action.
Okay, that's all of that.
He can't sign as the superintendent.
Okay, that's what I'm...
Internally, certainly, he can direct staff, et cetera.
Okay.
In that capacity.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Chaucie?
Yes.
Ms. Crull?
Yes.
Mr. DeFrancesco?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Valeski?
Yes.
Okay, eight to one to table.
It's the end of our business. We need a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
I have to use a second.
Oh, second.
One favor?